Regular Planning and Economic Development meeting for August 15th to order. We'll start with approval of the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the July 3rd, 2017 minutes. Under New Business, we have an election of officers. We are gonna pull Items B and C. If you'll note on the agenda, we have rescheduled this to Tuesday, August 29th. Both of those items, you'll see under both B and C, both of them will be moved to August 29th. And that will make Item B, the Public Hearing CPA 17-03, An Application by the City of Newberry to Amend the Text of the Future Land Use Element of the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan. The proposed changes are related to removing the prohibition on locating concrete and asphalt batch plants within the City of Newberry as specified in Policy URI dot 13 dot 1. Announced date application will first be heard by the City Commission. Item, let's see, where are we on A? We went on C now. Public Hearing LDR 17-06, An Application by the City of Newberry to Amend the Text of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations. The proposed changes are related to removing the prohibition on locating concrete and asphalt batch plants within the City of Newberry as specified in Section 4 dot 17 dot 4. And we'll announce the date. Application will first be heard by the City Commission. Then we'll have topics for members for discussion. Finally, we will adjourn. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
Any comments from the audience about the agenda as read? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even get a second. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. My apologies. Okay, here are no comments. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. If all, everyone would stand, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the July 3rd minutes? I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
And a second, probably second. Any comments about the minutes? Anybody have anything they want to say? Any public comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to election of officers. Brian, are you leading us in this if we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Basically, now that the composition of the Planning and Zoning Board has been amended, and we have five voting officers plus one ex officio, which is the mayor, we need to go ahead and elect our permanent Board of Officers. So we need to elect the Chair and then a Vice Chair to serve in the absence of the Chair.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion for anyone to serve as a Chair? Anyone want to volunteer for the task? I'll do my best not to miss many meetings, but sometimes those parents just don't pick up the golf kids on time.
I make a motion to elect Matt Hurson as Chair.
All right, I have a motion.
A second.
And I have a second. All right. All those in favor of Mr. Hurson serving as our Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, how about a Vice Chair? Do I have a motion for anyone to serve as Vice Chair? Don't everybody step forward for the task at one time? Now, you gotta, you can also volunteer if you're willing.
I'll volunteer.
All right. Okay, so we have a first motion for Mr. Boyer. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mr. Hurson and Mr. Boyer, our new Chair and Vice Chair. All right, the lump sum of the offers we need to get, right, Brian?
Ah, yes, sir.
Okay, so that moves us to our new Item B, the Public Hearing, The Application to Amend the Text of the Future Land Use. Brian, are you gonna lead us through this one as well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, the staff recommended amendments that you had before you resulted from an inquiry that we had from local business that inquired about the, what it would take to open a concrete batch plant in Newberry. And when we went and looked into what it actually took for the permitting process for that, we discovered that there was essentially a blanket prohibition on all concrete and asphalt batch plants in the City of Newberry. It doesn't specifically say City of Newberry, but what it says is on the, in a high aquifer groundwater recharge area. And so, when I looked further into that, discovered that all of Western Latchua County is in what's considered to be a high groundwater aquifer recharge area. Digging a little bit further, we started looking at how the industry's regulated, the scope of these types of plants. And so, what we discovered is if you look at the area in the code where these are prohibited, there's two areas. One's in the Comprehensive Plan, and then one of them is in the Land Development Regulations. Our Comprehensive Plan's a little bit unusual in that there's a lot of what would otherwise be regulatory language in what normally is more of a vision plan. And so, the same language is basically in both, in two separate areas. So that's why it would take an amendment of both the Comprehensive Plan as well as the Land Development Regulations. When you look at the areas where the batch plants are prohibited, it tends to be much more intensive uses with potentially much larger scale for waste generation. Things such as chemical and fertilizer manufacturer, paint and oil plants, paper and pulp manufacturing, petroleum refining, those kind of things. And when I looked further into what a concrete or an asphalt batch plant actually entails, it's, while it's an intensive use, it's a much smaller scale. These are basically plants that serve the local construction community, road building and home and commercial communities as far as construction. They have to be located in a fairly close proximity to the projects that they're serving because the setup time for concrete and the setup time for hot asphalt is such that if you're too far away, the concrete hardens and the asphalt cools. So they're basically a necessary asset to your construction community, has to be somewhere fairly close by. So, looking further, they are state regulated. For concrete batch plants, you typically, the primary thing that should be worried about is dust, and they actually require to capture the dust. They have, they have equipment that does that. And then also the wash water that they use to wash down the equipment, the trucks and the bins after they've been used. And again, that wash water is required to be captured and then the waste product recycled back into the process. And so, as long as they are meeting the state mandated requirements, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of concern over the potential for groundwater contamination. It is an issue if they're not complying because it affects the pH of the groundwater, but as long as they're actually meeting the state regulations, there shouldn't be a problem. Similar story with the asphalt plants, although the primary concern with those is, tends to be, from what I've read, is smell. They can, they can be a little bit stinky. It's hot asphalt, it's, you know, there's petroleum product in there. And so, but as far as actual groundwater contamination or soil contamination, as long that, once again, their waste products and ancillary products are required to be recycled back into the production process. And so, there's actually very little loss if they're operated properly. So, given that Newberry had a, basically, a blanket prohibition because of using the groundwater aquifer as the justification for that ban, I looked at the regulations for most of the surrounding communities in Latchua County and discovered that basically, through some sort of special exception or special use permit, all the other communities surrounding us allow for them. Either, even though Latchua County allows for it. And they may never get through the permitting process, but at least in the, in the regulations, it says that they are allowable. So, looked a little bit further at what we had in place for similar types of activities and determined that we think this is something that would be an economic benefit potentially to Newberry. It would serve our local, you know, we're a high-growth community, and so obviously there's a need here, especially for a, for a concrete-type plant. We recommend amending our code to allow them, but through special use permits. And so, the areas that currently, potentially, they could locate in, there's two categories that staff is recommending that they would be allowed by special use permit. This is the future land use map, as most of you are familiar with. You have the future land use plan map, which has the varying categories. Right now, you have two areas, you have three primary areas of industrial. But this one is actually, the underlying zoning wouldn't be appropriate because it's a industrial light and warehousing. But this is the zone for more heavy industrial over here in this area. And then this area down here, while not currently in development, is zoned, here's, future land use and zoning is industrial. The second category, which would be allowable under the future, the proposed future land use amendment, would be what's called material-oriented industrial. This is a land use category which recognizes that certain types of industrial use don't necessarily need to be on municipal water and sewer. They accumulate materials for processing, large quantities of materials. The only area in Newberry that we have right now is, this is the Southern Fuelwood area where they do the wood processing. And so, the recommendation would be to allow for the use by special use permit in that type of environment. They would, somebody say if they were in a, in a more remote area but wanted to locate a plant, would have to come in for the special use permit, they'd have to change their future land use designation on that parcel that they wanted to locate on. And then beyond that, they would get, come in, apply for the special use permit. And through the special use permit process, the city would then establish basically the rules of the game. It allows the city to, on a, on a case-by-case basis, to evaluate the location and the appropriateness of the use for that specific location, and at the size and intensity that's being applied for. And as far as zoning, again, the, you know, we really have two primary industrial areas where potentially these could be allowed. One is where we already have a concrete batch plant with Watson. And then the other potential area through zoning would be over on the west side of town. Currently, we don't have an asphalt plant, but believe that there is one in the works. So, that was permitted prior to the change in the, in the current regulations. So, that's, basically, our recommendation would be, in the, like I said, it's a two-step process, basically. If the Planning and Zoning Board agrees with the recommendation and recommends for approval to the City Commission, we would then go back and draft the actual ordinances that would make the amendments to make it allowable by special use permit, run it through the City Attorney's Office, obviously, for their review. And then, we would basically put together a application for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to this, submit it to the State, it would be read first by the Commission, passed, approved on first reading, sent to the State. The land development change beneath that for the land development regulations, if again, approved on first reading, would then sit and, it would be contingent upon the Comprehensive Plan change as well, because it couldn't go forward without it. And so, we would wait to hear back from the State. The process there is you send it to DEO, and you also send it to a number of other state agencies. They all review the proposed change, come back with comments or concerns. You address those, if necessary, and then they give the stamp of approval, so to speak, send it back, and then you would go back for your second reading and passage, and then it would become, become law. So, any questions?
Does Board have any questions for staff?
Um, I do. Under 14.17.4, the prohibited uses in structures, the only thing that this will address, because there's a whole list of things here, the only thing that, that this change will address is simply just the asphalt and concrete batching plants. It's not gonna open it up for all these other industries?
I'm sure that is, that's correct. It would be specific just to concrete and asphalt batch plants.
And we have three locations already designated industrial for this.
Mr. Chair, we have, we have three that are, well, if you look at the future land use, we have three, but this one is actually the industrial light and warehousing, that's in some commercial intensive, it would not be allowed in that area because it's not the more intense zoning of industrial. It's for small assembly, small manufacturing, warehousing, and the front end of that is actually commercial intensive as well. So really, only two areas as far as doing it by, in the industrial zoning district. And then, potentially, anywhere else in agriculture, they could apply.
They would have to come back in and have the land use changed?
Yes, ma'am. They would have to come back in, get a, basically, explain what they're trying to do, and as part of the application for the future land use plan, plan change, they basically would also be submitting their request for, for the special use permit, because they don't need one without the other. And it'd be contingent, of course, upon the passage of the Future Land Use Plan Amendment.
Matt?
Yeah, I've got several questions. One of them just came up, looking at the, at the map, and under 14 dot seventeen dash dot seven, this is, it talks about the setback, and side and rear, side, side 10 feet and rear 15, except where railroad spur, but side or rear property line. In that case, in the one industrial there in the center, that's got right up against the railroad line, and then...
This one here, or?
Yeah, that one, the railroad line, and then that agricultural, and then 235, and there's a residential zoning, probably. I don't know what that distance is, but it's not very far. It's not gonna be an issue. Could they literally set an asphalt plant right on that railroad spur?
Hypothetically, they could, but again, that's the reason that you make approval only by special use permit, so that the Planning and Zoning Board and then the Commission would have control over, over those issues, be able to investigate those issues, require the applicant to prepare documentation as to, as to why that would not, would or would not be an impact or a negative impact. And then, the Board and the Commission would evaluate that information, decide whether it's an appropriate location for the use.
Okay. With the, I've got several questions. You want me to just go through them all?
Go right ahead.
Are there, are there any limits or controls on trips, especially with heavy trucks, things like that, that are going in and out of those industrial zones?
Mr. Chair, again, that would be, all be part of the special use permit. It would have to be included. If it was information that wasn't included, then the Board would have the opportunity to request that of the applicant.
And I guess the last question maybe is just for information, where does Newberry, I mean, we got the Watson plant for concrete, but where do we currently source our asphalt from?
That could be potentially anywhere in the Gainesville area, Latchua County area that has, has the product available on a, project-by-project basis, so.
Um...
Williston, Latchua, and Gainesville.
Okay.
The City Manager informs me.
So, then the last question, and you brought it up, was how was the Watson site put through? I mean, obviously, if it was, it was done on the books or with these, with that, so it was obviously a special exemption completely?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Watson plant, the approval for the site plan for a concrete batch plant and an asphalt batch plant on that site was actually approved prior to the change in the comp plan and the land development regulations. And so, basically, they, they have their approval, which still is in effect as of today. If a new applicant comes in, they would have to go through the, if this was approved, then the new applicant would have to go through the special use permit as outlined here. That plant already has basically approval from a number of years ago that was still in effect.
Mr. Chair, if you want the history on it, I can give you a little more detailed history if you'd like. It's an interesting history in the sense that it created the prohibition. And so, what happened was the, there was a, there was a committee that was formed, a subcommittee at the Planning and Zoning Board, and it included our land development regulation administrator at the time, and our planner, and one commissioner. That was the gist of the committee. And they made a recommendation, they started the process of essentially citing the Watson facility. The Watson facility was having problems getting permitting in Gainesville. And so, there was some interest to move their entire facility to Newberry, the jobs that it would create, the trucks and the associated industry that would come along with it, the people that fixed the trucks, the painters, the, you know, all along the way. So that was the, the general intent of that. So the committee started meeting, and they changed the regulations such that would allow for a facility like that to be housed in our industrial area, and would allow for an asphalt plant and a concrete batch plant. That was, that was the nature of what the committee did. That went to Planning and Zoning Board, and then it went to, Planning and Zoning Board approved it, and then it went to the City Commission. There was litigation that commenced with all of that. There's speculation as to why that litigation commenced. In my view, and I think it's fairly educated view, that the, there was a competitor of Mr. Watson that did not want an asphalt plant and a concrete batch plant located in the City of Newberry for exactly the reason that was just specified, high-growth area, and now this local organization, Watson, would have advantage in the marketplace. And so, a group out of Tallahassee sued the city, and, and there was significant litigation that commenced as a result of all this. The city ultimately won in that litigation, went to trial in front of Judge Turner, and I represented the city in the trial, and then there was a lot of allegations that the regulations were, were promulgated in a way that was not proper. We prevailed, and the judge, the judge viewed the city's position as correct. And so, then, that allowed Watson to come into the city, and, and as Brian gave you the history on it, that's, that's what happened. In that process, I learned a little bit, I wouldn't say I know a lot about concrete batch plants and asphalt plants, but I know a little bit about that. There are differences in asphalt plants as per the nature of the fuel that is used to heat the material. You can use old tires, you can use fuel, you can use natural gas. There's different ways to fuel whatever's most economical is, is what can be used. And of course, there's different pollutants that are, that are managed by virtue of, that are created by each one of those different technologies. So if I go back and get a 1960s manufactured asphalt plant, then it's probably gonna be diesel fuel-fired, and I'll have a very different noise, odor, pollutant as a result of the, the operation of that asphalt plant. And if you have something like that, then you're probably, and you permit that, you're probably gonna have citizens in the surrounding area that are going to be questioning you and questioning your City Commissioner, like, why did you allow for this to happen? That is something you need to consider in the process of allowing an asphalt plant. Concrete batch plants, my understanding, as Brian also mentioned, are, are much less intensive. They create dust in the washout. Those are very different resultant from the, from the operation of these two types of facilities. Finishing the story of the Watson situation was that when all of this was happening and the litigation was going on, it created a difference in the aspect of composition of our City Commission. In fact, two of the people that were litigants, plaintiffs against the City of Newberry became my boss, essentially, and they became commissioners, which was a very unique thing for my experience, that my adversary is now my boss. And one of the things that ultimately happened was that there was a prohibition against these types of facilities, and now you're getting the aftermath of all of that some 15 years later, I suppose it is now. So this is an interesting, we've kinda come full circle to all of this. My advice to you is to be careful in this process and be educated as to what it is that we're doing, so we don't repeat a controversy that occurred with the city in the years gone by. And looking at the materials that Brian has put before us, I find interesting the language in the City of Gainesville section of their permitting for a special use permit. And it's the language that's immediately below this page that looks like this. These aren't numbered, so it's kinda hard, but it's the one, the graph that says transmitter towers, junkyard, and salvage yards.
Got it.
And then it has highlighted asphalt paving mixtures and blocks, subject to specifically regulated industry provisions below. So that's the, that's the language that I'm referring to. And then immediately under that, you look at specially regulated industries. The following apply to uses designated filing regulations, I think is what is intent there. The filing regulations apply to uses designated as subject to specially regulated industry provisions. And then number one, reports. The applicant for a special use permit shall submit information specifying expected air emissions, surface and groundwater emissions, noise levels, truck traffic volumes, goes to your question, Mr. Chair, that you just asked, including time of day levels, odor levels, which is pertinent certainly to asphalt plants. Glare impacts, I'm not sure that that is a real big deal in this instance, especially in industrial area, but, but it's certainly something that you could look at. Compatibility of these emissions and the impact levels with other properties, uses in neighborhoods within 2,000 feet. The report shall indicate that these impacts shall not violate local, regional, state, or federal limits. The report shall also indicate that best, this is probably the most important language in the entire paragraph, the report shall also indicate that the best available technology is being used to control impacts from the specially regulated industry. And then, as you note, asphalt plants are subject to specially regulated industry provisions. So, in the, in the process of applying a special use permit, my counsel to you would be to include language similar to this, such that you're looking at each one of these items, and very serious consideration would be made as to an asphalt plant that is era manufactured in 1960 and coming, or are we in the best available technologies such that we're using efficient fuels, that we are addressing the odor issue? And as, as Brian said, you can do recapture technologies of what's coming out of the stack to a great degree in, in reducing emissions, both as to odor and pollutants into the air, using best available technologies in this, in this arena. So those are certainly some things I think that would, you would want to look at. In the advent, you had a very contested, controversial situation going on both in front of this board, because these special exceptions come to you and then go on to the City Commission, and, and that would be my counsel to certainly look at that in the process of a special use permit. That's, that's the history, and that's why there's a prohibition currently. And what happened with Watson, which all of that, all of Watson's permitting preceded the prohibition, as Brian said.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that history. That was prior to my arrival.
If I, I can summarize what I think Scott said, is, is that we can do this, we just need to do a better job of it than we did before.
Much, much more concisely said.
So, any other questions for staff?
I actually have one for the City Attorney. So, in the case of something like that, where we would include this type of specially regulated industrial language... this type of specially regulated industrial language into the special use permit, are there considerations that need to be taken into, let me like not use the same word five hundred times. Are there considerations we need to make so that by considering special use permits, we're not also opening ourselves up to like litigation from, we always deny special use permits? I- is there language that helps protect the board from that, the commission from that? Do you understand what I'm trying to?
That's exactly the nutshell that you have, that you have to crack when these things are before you. Because there's got to be substantial incompetent evidence to permit it. And there's got to be substantial incompetent evidence to deny it. So if you're going to deny a permit that comes before you, you need to say why. And it needs to be specifically in your um, in your resolution of denial. You're, you're recommending to the city commission and the city commission can take your recommendation and adopt it or, or override you. But if you are denying a permit, there, it can't be on the basis of how many people in the audience are there that are against this? And then how many people are for it? Nobody raises their hand except two people, the applicant and their lawyer or, or their, um, their expert. And so you vote based upon the population that's present at the, at the meeting in a, in a tally vote like that. It cannot be based on that sort of evidence. It's got to be based upon, well, wait a minute, you're using not best available technologies. You're using technology from the nineteen sixties and we can do better. With there's, and you got to base it on those kind of criteria. And you should tie all of, all of that back to state, local and federal regulations as far as air emissions, odor emissions. And are you impacting the residents in that two thousand feet circumference of the property boundaries? And, and what kind of impact is there on those residents negatively? And then, and then there should be specific language in the, in the um, in the hearing that you're relying on to do that, so you're just not denying out of hand. We just don't like uh, at batch plants, we just don't like asphalt plants.
Tell me, we can't use Facebook.
Could you, could you show on the map, like for where the Watson, what two thousand feet around that looks like? Do you know?
Don't really have that capability on this, on a, on a PowerPoint presentation.
I think I can point to it.
Yeah.
Try and tell me if I'm right, but it, we, I think Watson, the bus like right in here.
Watson's uh, up here, in this corner.
It might be this one.
Yeah.
Watson's back behind, you know, it's out in the middle.
How about just from the industrial area, what's two thousand feet from the edge of that, let's say?
What was the question?
I'm trying to visualize.
I know.
And I think, isn't CI, isn't that the old um, Main Street?
Yes, we've hit that.
Yeah, so RPM is right behind there. Watson is up there, two thousand feet would probably take you pretty close to, into the green of A there? I don't, I mean, it's kind of a.
Yeah, like I said, on that.
But that entire area is industrial.
I guess, that's one of my main concerns is, is unli- unlike the Gainesville language, the only language we have in our industrial section is, is setbacks of, of fifteen, twenty-five feet or actually larger from, from wetlands, streams and creeks. A- and so I happen to live in one of those residential areas that it's mildly buffered by agriculture and railroad. And so certainly we would be within two thousand feet of the edge of that industrial. Same thing over here in, in the, the western section, there's a residential area right in the middle of that industrial area that would likely, I mean, it's property setbacks and, and noise and odor setbacks are quite different. I've dealt with the noise issue in, in town before and it's.
Mr. Chair, that, that's why the um, y- your point is well taken and that's exactly why um, in addition to what's in the industrial zoning district language, this would allow through special use permit, which is uh, guided by fourteen, section fourteen point seven. In fourteen point seven, you have all of the issues that you, and, and more that you just discussed. Uh, it's part of the, part of the packet in the CPA um, section. And so, uh, it addresses fire and explosion hazards, smoke, dust and dirt, fumes, vapors, gases, noise. And so all of uh, you know, odor, glare, hazardous materials. All of those considerations would then be evaluated on a case by case basis uh, for each application. And limitations uh, on all of those issues would be included in the um, recommendation from, from the board and the commi- commission if they ultimately approved it. So they, that's where those would be, those issues would be addressed. Not that we couldn't add additional language if, if the board likes that Gainesville language. There's certainly uh, no reason you couldn't borrow from that, if you think that helps.
Can I, can I clarify? You, you said that would be done on a case by case basis? So if somebody coming before the board with a special exemption request, then we would have to, whatever the makeup of the board and then the city commission would, would handle that on a case by case basis. So the first one may set precedent, but they would never have to follow those set of rules.
Correct, um, Mr. Chair, the, as far as setting precedent, it, it's not that the approval of a special use permit or special exception doesn't at least imply that there's a precedent that's been sent. But each one is evaluated individually on its own merit. And so just because you've approved it in one area, absolutely does not mean it would have to be approved under the same conditions in another area. That's why, that's why you do it on a sp- a special use permit basis.
It's, it's related to that one specific piece of property. It's a quai- quasi judicial hearing, meaning that everything is testified under oath. And compatibility as to this property may be highly different than compatibility to this property. Depending on the surrounding area, the use that's being promulgated, all of, all of those things are uh, are evaluated on a very individualized basis per property.
Okay. Mr. Chair, the very reason that, that we would not recommend that we change the code to allow a use like this by right is for, for everything the city attorney just mentioned is that you have to be able to make those judgments on a case by case basis without setting precedent.
Okay. The best avail- best uh, BAT, best available technology language, I'm not seeing in fourteen point seven. Brian, maybe I'm missing it, but, but that would be certainly something that I would suggest that we.
That'd be a good addition.
Emphasize that into the uh, the language. At, at a minimum, I would suggest that.
Mr. Boyer, is that a question for me on your mind or comment?
And, and perhaps, I'm sorry to finish that out. The um, the study language as to surrounding property owners compatibility, especially as to, that's a use like this, that that be reported to the, this body as well as the commission. Compatibility as to two thousand feet. And, and it would be that property, I want to make sure that you understand that not all of the industrial areas where you measure the two thousand feet is from the property boundaries of the property that is before you. That it's already zoned industrial, so they've gone through all of that work. Now they're coming before you and saying, hey, we want a asphalt plant or a concrete batch plant to be permitted here. And, and so you measure it from the two thousand feet from that property boundary.
Not the zone boundary.
Yeah.
What I want to make sure of is that um, all we're doing right now is we're just voting to either up or down on amending the text. We're not, we're not voting on, on language for the special exemptions or anything of that nature at this point, correct?
Um, Mr. Chair, basically, that, that's essentially correct. What, what staff is requesting is that the uh, Planning and Zoning Board, if they are in favor and with additional recommendations such as the, the additional language.
Prove the concept.
Exactly, prove the concept, go ahead and um, draft, move to the next step, which would be to draft uh, the ordinance for uh, each of these amendments based on the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, well, I was thinking about, I mean, if we're, if each case that comes before us is going to be individual, it's going to be hard to, to draft language based on Gainesville and, and vote on it because everything's going to change as each one comes to us. So I was just wanting to make sure what we're going to be voting on tonight.
Well, what the, what the text would say is that all of the protected area, the protections in the Land Development Code as to fourteen point seven point one. These special permits for industrial based activities must be adhered to. So you, the uh, and then it goes right through each one of those areas or those sub paragraphs. Fire and explosion hander- hazards, smoke, dust, dirt, visible emissions and open burning, um, fumes, vapor gases, noise, odor, glare, hazardous materials, hazardous waste management. And then what the Gainesville ordinance does is it's, it sets a couple of additional standards out, which are that the applicant must show that they're using best available technologies in the implementation of their, of their facility. And you have to give a study to this board and a study to the, the um, city commission that says, we've applied all of these sub paragraphs that I just listed in a two thousand foot uh, radius to our property that we're attempting to have permitted. And these are the impacts as to compatibility in this area. And we're using best, and here's what we're doing to utilize the best available technologies as far as recapturing gases and using fuels that are efficient and that kind of thing. That's, that's the report that will come back to you. And, and you would not touch the Gainesville ordinances, it would be encompassed in our ordinance. And then they would be, give you that specific um, response as to the, the permitting process.
Okay, well, I can, I understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions, the board?
Scott, has the Gainesville language, has that been tested, has anybody litigated? Is it, or has it been fairly secure? They, they had a problem?
I, I don't know of it being challenged and uh, I don't think it would be successful to be challenged. I think that it's, you have the right to implement the language in a way that you feel is appropriate for your city. You could relax this language, you could make it more stringent. It's, this is your bailiwick. Legislative, right now you're in the legislative process of creating the rules that will be applied on a case by case basis.
I think one of the things that's always difficult at this step is that we don't have the actual language in front of us to kind of, we, we have concepts to talk about a potential language. So I think if, if this is something that this board is interested in, then the appropriate motion would be to direct staff to, to formulate that language. And then we get a shot at actually reading that language and looking at it and those kinds of things. Based off of the conversation that we've had and the questions that you guys have asked, they would bring back something that, that meets those criteria as best that they can. And then we can, then we can really kind of nitpick the details and ask some more pointed questions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would uh, ask that we go ahead and announce um, that it'll be heard again at the next planning and zoning meeting, uh, which is now currently scheduled for um, August twenty ninth. And we'll go ahead and staff will prepare a draft to be avail- available for that. If we announce it tonight's meeting, that that'll, that's when it'll be heard, we don't have to re-advertise.
Okay.
And uh, that's my understanding, Mr. Attorney.
Do I hear us approaching the motion?
Yeah, um, I make a motion to table this until our next meeting when our. When they can bring back um, language that we can look at and, and discuss.
Don't we need to make the motion for them to bring back the language?
The, the language is directing staff to bring back language. And I'm presuming that you're encompassing the best available technology language and.
So we know what we're talking about.
And a study of two thousand feet surrounding the applicant's property.
And, Mr. Chair, actually, if I might, if I may, um, procedurally, we need two motions because we have two applica- two applications for us. We have the CPA and then we also have the LDR. So essentially the same motion for each, but.
Right.
We'll do it, we'll do it once and then we're going to do it again. Ditto.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Wasn't the motion to table?
The motion was to table until the next P and Z when staff will bring back concrete language uh, for us to look at. Did I get that motion right?
Correct. Set the appropriate motion.
That is uh, I've got two head nods, that's where we're wanting to go here.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a second from Matt. Any other comments about the motion on the floor? Any public comments about the motion on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, do we need to have a presentation for the LDRs or is it pretty much the same? We, we've covered the, so now we can.
The, the language is nearly identical, it's just a different section number, it's in the LDRs as opposed to the concrete plan.
We procedurally hit everything right, so nobody cries foul. All right, would anybody else like to make a motion? Along the same lines of yes, staff, go bring, bring this back to us in a more concrete form.
I would like to duplicate the previous motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions about the uh, motion on the floor? Any public comments about the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Do we have any topics for members? Mr. Boyer, we'll start down there with you, anything you'd like to bring to the P and Z's attention?
Um, kids are in school, drive safely, be aware of buses, don't run around them. Um, basically, that's it.
Thank you.
Have fun, be safe.
Always a good reminder, Ms. Wong.
I apologize for the amount of talking I'm doing tonight. Um, in the paper over the weekend, I saw that uh, the county had approved money to buy the, the railway from High Springs to Newberry, thirteen miles for three point three million. Where exactly will that end in Newberry? Do we know?
That's my understanding, I'll let Brian.
And, and maybe this is for just bringing up topics that we may need to discuss. Cause they've got landowners and presidents that have asked.
The last time that I, I saw a draft of the plan, it was going to terminate at Northwest Forty Sixth Avenue. And then a future plan would have to be drafted to go from Forty Sixth Avenue through downtown Newberry.
That doesn't seem like thirteen miles then.
Um, it's a.
It's connected.
It actually goes up into High Springs and then uh, west and I think actually east too. I think there's, there's more than just the straight line uh, from Forty Sixth North.
Okay. I think the intent is that the city of High Springs, the city of High Springs is going to uh, put, Courtney, is it three million dollar, no, three hundred thousand dollars? I knew it was a three, but the, the city of High Springs is going to purchase the property that is contained within the city of High Springs? All right, I'm, I'm wrong.
Courtney, will you come on down here and help us out?
So, but the, but to the point is, it won't truly come to Newberry then? It's going to stop at Forty Sixth. Will they have any provisions for landowners like fencing or things like that to keep people off the property?
At this point, they're just doing the acquisition of the property and there'll be later agreements that will discuss exactly how that property will be used, who will be maintaining it and things like that. So this is just the acquisition of that property that needs to close by December of this year.
And the, and there would be an opportunity conceivably for the city of Newberry to link up with that trail in the city of Newberry's proper.
Correct, but.
If, if the city so chose, the, the commission decided to tag along in a purchase.
So the way the federal rail banking works, you can't split up certain sections. So the section that's being purchased now, which includes the portion in High Springs, has to be purchased all at once as one piece. So that's why there was a concern that this deal would fall through. Cause you couldn't just go and, and piecemeal out what you wanted.
And the city is, the city of High Springs is picking up the tab for three hundred thousand of, of the, of land on the trail that is in the city of High Springs.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're contributing to that, but the county's actually closing on the property. But there'll be an interlocal agreement between the city of High Springs and the county.
Hopefully we can look to future grants for the city of Newberry that can tie into this and then connect to other rails to trails, that's the, the objective of. and then connect to other rails to trails, that's the, the objective of.
They would eventually like to link up, um, coast to coast across the state with these rails to trails.
Recognizing a, a member of, a representative of Yo Ho's staff in the audience, might be able to get an inside view of this? If you'd like to make any comments about this? It's been a hot topic for me.
I went to the county commission meeting, um, because phase two, which is the forty-six to the city of Newberry portion, um, was phase two. And, um, the reason they couldn't use grant funds was because they weren't allowed to use grant funds for land acquisition. They could use grant funds and utilize state dollars and federal dollars for actual construction of the trail where they couldn't for land use, I mean, for land purchase or acquisition. I don't know if they're going to be going from forty-sixth in, because at the meeting, the only opposition there was was Wesley Carter and conservationists who were upset that they were using the wild places.
Wild spaces, public places.
Funding for non-conservation. They caught a lot of, lot of heat for that.
I believe that was Commissioner Byerley's, uh, yeah.
Yeah, they were very upset with it, but talking about cattle or fencing or security, I had communicated with the, um, pathway multiple times about it because we cross cattle on that railroad track, which would then be a rails to trails. A, it's like twenty-five hundred meter feet off of the highway, security was an issue, some sort of patrol, illegal dumping, because there's also the one on twenty-six on the south side of our farm that has just that happening. And they said that they would be willing to either put box culverts under the rail or the trail way for cattle to cross historic, you know, cattle crossings that have been honored by CSX. That was an issue for Mon Cala as well, or have some sort of innovative gates. Fencing, security wasn't going to be an option because of parks that were in place. But one thing for city of Newberry, they actually asked people to show hands of who was from Newberry. And they were not very favorable with them not being represented, so.
We've, I'm not sure that anybody was aware of that meeting.
We all had a budget meeting that evening.
We had a budget meeting that evening. And I would like to, since the topic is on the floor, uh, gently correct some of the county commissioners because while, uh, I think their stance is that the city of Newberry has not paid any attention and has not, uh, doesn't care and doesn't support the rails to trails. In fact, we passed a resolution in support of the bike path, we just lack the funding because we choose to use our funds on roads and, uh, infrastructure. And I believe three million dollars might be able to fix three thirty-seven, probably go a long way towards it. But everybody has priorities.
I've had a citizen express concern about his adjoining property to the, to that potential rails or trails land.
Is that included your comments? Ms. Jessica?
I have no comments, thank you.
Uh, I have no comments, thank you guys for staying, uh, here and watching. Public comment, you sat through the P and Z meeting, you might want to say a word? Did I ask staff over there, Mr. Attorney, did you have a comment? Could you come to the podium ma'am and introduce yourself, sorry, we want the folks at home to, to see your face and hear your. That's all right. Have, have you got a little light on down there? We got somebody coming to make sure we can hear you.
Yeah.
We're streaming and on TV and now you're famous.
Anyhow, you did very, uh, you, you showed me more, uh, caring. You are studying better than what I'm, I've seen before. We went through the, uh, I was here when they were doing the watermelon pond and trying to make a racetrack out of it and, you know, we're going, it's going to, the oil's going to go into the ground with nothing to stop, anyhow, you're an improvement.
Well, we appreciate that, we don't get to hear it very often, so thank you.
I'm going to have to stop in more often.
Please do, please do. What was your name ma'am?
Uh, Claire Sankey.
Claire Sankey, nice to meet you.
S A N K E Y.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. You too, any other public comment? Did, uh, Mr. Attorney, did you have any comment tonight? Staff, all right, being none, meeting adjourned.